Okay, welcome to this regular meeting of Cleveland Heights City Council. It is March 3rd at seven, I'll call it 7:40. Our Clerk of Council is out today, so I'm going to appoint Councilwoman Larson as our clerk. Councilwoman Larson, would you call the role, please?
Thank you, President Kuta.
I see you're overwhelmed by this appointment.
Well, look at my responsibilities at the moment. Just teasing. I would like to know if the following are present. Counselor Petrus.
Here.
Counselor Larson, here. Counselor Kuta.
Here.
Counselor Cobb. Vice President Russell.
Here.
Counselor Posh.
Here.
Counselor Maddox.
Here.
All right, you're doing great. So I don't have to excuse any absent members. I do have an amendment to the agenda. We're going to add a resolution to the agenda. And actually, Vice President Russell, would you, well, you don't really need to say this now, but we're also going to add a space on the agenda after the communication from the mayor to honor a bus driver for Cleveland Heights University Heights Schools. So approval of, we don't have any approval of minutes from previous meetings. Mr. Law Director, do we need to vote on amending the menu of the agenda?
If there's an amendment to be made, you could just entertain a motion to amend and then vote on that motion.
Okay, so do I have a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. So no minutes to approve, communications from the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President, no comments tonight.
All righty, thank you. Then we'll move on to our amended agenda, and I'm going to turn this over to Vice President Russell.
Thank you, President Kuta and all of my colleagues and the mayor. I am very happy at this moment in time to be able to honor and recognize a school bus driver. As most of you all know, I am a school bus driver and have pride in that work. And a phenomenal young man did something amazing on February 22nd by saving the life of 15 students from a fire in a school bus. I am also happy to announce that the Governor's Office has also sent a representative to honor him as well. Director Andy Wilson is here from the Ohio Department of Public Safety. Most of you all may not be aware of that I was appointed by Governor DeWine to sit on the school bus safety task force. And I was the only school bus driver in the state of Ohio on that committee where I thought I did the bus drivers proud. And I am very proud here today because we get a lot of flak, but today we get a chance to be honored because one bus driver has actually went above and beyond his duty to be able to save students in Cleveland Heights City Schools. But before I go forward with the resolution here from council, our council members, I'd like to bring up Director Andy Wilson from the Governor's Office on behalf of the Ohio Department of Public Safety. Not also do we have a recognition from the Governor's Office for Dorian Pace. We also have a resolution from Congresswoman Chantel Brown. We also have one from the county executive as well as all of county council. So you are very much being well-willed, honored here today. And I'm just so pleased to be able to do this, and I want to thank my President of Council for allowing me to do this, not only get a chance to do this as your council vice president, but I also get a chance to do this as your union president. So I'm playing a double role here this evening. But I want to pass this over to Director Wilson. After he say his few words, I want to give him the honor to read the one from the county on behalf of the county, the one from the Congresswoman's office, because we found out and decided to do this late on Friday, those will be mailed to you. But she definitely sends her warm regards as well as everyone else who are honoring you today. Director Wilson, thank you so much for being here and coming all the way from Columbus.
Thank you. President Kuta, Vice President Russell, actually, I'd ask permission to have Mr. Pace join me at the podium this time. Again, President Kuta, Vice President Russell, members of the council, it truly is an honor to be here with you tonight. I'm Andy Wilson, Director of the Ohio Department of Public Safety. And back in the fall of 2023, the governor appointed me to lead the Ohio Task Force on school bus safety. And as Vice President Russell said, she was appointed to serve on that task force as well. And you all should be incredibly proud of how she represented your community as a member of that task force. And she, she did well. She was very, very passionate about the issue and did a very good job of representing not just the drivers, but the community's views on how we can better keep our kids safe. And as we looked, well, first of all, the task force was formed as a result of a fatal bus crash that happened August 22nd, 2023 in Clark County, Ohio, where an 11-year-old child was ejected from a bus and killed when that bus rolled over. And the governor put together this task force to kind of study the issues involved in keeping our kids safe on the buses. And he brought together experts in the field, he brought together practitioners, and we were to really kind of look at everything related to school bus safety and just take a look at, hey, are there recommendations that we can make to keep our kids safer on our buses? And we looked at a lot of different issues. We looked at infrastructure of roads around our schools, we looked at the construction of buses, we looked at different safety devices that you might be able to put on buses to keep our kids safe. And as we examined the issues and we deliberated on possible recommendations, really, the thing we kept coming to or coming down to is that the single biggest factor in determining whether or not our kids are safe on the bus is the driver, is the driver. And you saw that played out firsthand in this community through the actions of Mr. Pace. And as you stand here, his family and this community, I hope you are so incredibly proud of what you did that day, and not thinking of yourself, but in thinking of those kids, man. And again, as we brought these bus drivers in, it was readily apparent that the number one thing that they are concerned about every day that they get on that bus is the safety of our kids. And I'm telling you, if I was a parent in this community, I would be honored, I would feel such a level of comfort putting my kids on one of your school buses, knowing that there are men and women of this character that are willing to keep my kid safe. So on behalf of Governor Mike DeWine, (Applause) and listen, because the governor is so passionate about keeping kids safe, again, if you know the governor, he is passionate about keeping our kids safe. He's so passionate about keeping our kids safe, every time there's something going on with a bus, I have to let him know. So I, as soon as I saw the information about your fire and your actions, we let the governor know. And today, on behalf of the governor and the Department of Public Safety of the state of Ohio, I want to present you with a director's coin from the Department of Public Safety. So thank you very much. And then I will read the Cuyahoga County Council resolution that speaks to your bravery and heroism. Cuyahoga County Council, "The Council of Cuyahoga County, Ohio takes profound pride and great personal pleasure in recognizing Dorian Pace for his bravery and heroism. Whereas Dorian Pace is a member of OAPSE, AFSCME, Local 4, AFLCIO, Northeast Ohio District, and a school bus driver who heroically saved 15 students from a burning school bus in Cleveland Heights on February 27th, 2025. His act of bravery received national attention. And whereas, Dorian has been employed with the Cleveland Heights School District for approximately 11 years. Prior to that, Dorian worked as a substitute cleaner for the district and spent two years at Belfair JCB, a mental health treatment facility. And whereas, it all happened at the corner of Cambridge and North Hampton Roads, less than a mile from the Monticello Middle School, where the kids were to be dropped off. Within minutes of getting the children to safety, the school bus burst into flames. And whereas, if asked to define the word hero, many of us would name qualities that demand a person to rise above, the qualities that genuinely drive a person to be stronger, smarter, kinder, and more than just an average human being. They're the people who give when they have nothing to gain. Heroes act before anyone else realizes there is a problem. They volunteer to put someone else before themselves. And whereas, it is because Dorian displayed remarkable heroism, ensuring the safety of the children on his bus, and by demonstrating exceptional courage in the face of danger. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Council of Cuyahoga County, Ohio hereby recognizes Dorian Pace for his heroic sacrifice saving the lives of 15 students. We appreciate his dedicated service to the community and wish him the very best." And this resolution is signed by the President, Vice President, and members of the Cuyahoga County Council. Thank you.
And Dorian, and Dorian, on behalf of Cleveland Heights City Council, we also have a resolution for you as well. Resolution 0382025, "A resolution recognizing and commending Dorian Pace for his heroic actions and ensuring the safety of students during a school bus fire, and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. Whereas, on the morning of February 27th, 2025, a Cleveland Heights University Heights school bus transporting 15 students to Monticello Middle School experienced a sudden fire near an intersection at Cambridge and North Hampton. And whereas, the school bus driver, Dorian Pace, OPSI-ASME Local Member, 617, who have served the Cleveland Heights University High School District for 11 years and have been a dedicated bus driver for a total of 21 years, upon noticing flames emerging from behind a rear wheel, acted with remarkable swiftness and compassion and poise to bring the bus to a safe stop, ensuring the immediate and orderly evacuation of all students onboard. And whereas, due to Dorian's pace quick thinking and under and overwhelming actions, all students were removed from the bus without injury, preventing what could have been a tragic incident. And whereas, Dorian Pace implied extraordinary professionalism, courage, and dedication to the safety of the students, embodying the highest standards of service in the transportation of our precious cargo, our children. And whereas, the Cleveland Heights City Council wishes to formally recognize and commend Dorian Pace for his bravery and commitment to public safety. Now and therefore, be it resolved by the Council of Cleveland Heights, Ohio, Section 1, to Cleveland, Section 1, the Cleveland Heights City Council hereby extends its deepest gratitude and appreciation to Dorian Pace for his selfless and brave actions to ensuring the safety of students during the school bus fire on February 27th, 2025. The Council recognized Dorian Pace as an outstanding public servant and expresses its admiration for his courage, quick response, and commitment to the well-being of Cleveland Heights students." And the rest of it goes on to be just legal stuff. So I'm going to stop there, but I want to say, Dorian, thank you so very much for making all bus drivers across the state proud. Congratulations. Thank you so much. All right. The family, they want the family. Mayor, would you care to join us, please?
I'd love to. And I know the law director had a question about some technicalities. Maybe the council president and the council clerk and the mayor can sign this once you vote on it.
Fine.
All right.
He would like your family there. All right, thank you so much.
Yeah. We got to get this voted on and signed.
Yes, we will. All right. Yes, I know, I know.
Mr. Pace, I don't want to compel you to do this, but if you'd like to say something, you know, you can just lift the microphone up and...
Oh yeah, I'll say something. I'm not the best at public speaking, but (sigh) that'll make me tear up up here. Well, first off, I want to say, I want to give honor to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. And I want to say that we have to be proactive with prayer, because I believe that's the reason why nobody was harmed in this situation. I want to thank my parents for molding me into who I am. I want to thank my coworkers for allowing me to learn from them. And I want to say thank you to the city for recognizing me.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Pace, I don't know you, but you seem to be, just looking at you, you seem to be like kind of saying, I was just doing my job, but we do appreciate it. And I want to recognize Superintendent Kirby, who is here. Thank you, Superintendent. Always great to have you here.[1151.04][1151.04](Applause) Oh, and all the other bus drivers that are here, can you raise your hands just so we know who you are?
All right.
Okay, we're going to move on with the agenda. Next, we have the city administrators' report.
Excuse me, Mr. President, did you vote?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You just need a motion to approve and then a second?
Okay, so even though we're not doing legislation right now, we could vote on the resolution?
I think that would be fine, yeah. I assume that's why you were amending your agenda.
All right. So this is, sorry, Resolution 0382025. Do I have a motion to adopt this?
So moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That resolution passes. Thank you, council. And now, the city administrators' report. Did we lose them? Oh, there we are.
Sorry, this is the boring part. That was the highlight, I think, of the evening. I have answers to most of your questions, so we'll go. It probably doesn't flow in the one that you told me as a list, but the Lee Road parking garage is open, that's okay. Window washing will be done this week, and having an elevator contractor come out to make necessary repairs to the computer board, so hopefully have some status on the elevator here pretty quickly. They were waiting for a weather break. I said it's 60 for the next two weeks or close to it, so I'm trying to get them out there pretty quickly. Cedar Fairmont Garage, waiting on a steel beam from the fabricator, that should get here in about 10 days, and still looking at a mid-April completion. I think I told you that a couple of weeks ago. The Peacemaker contract, this one's a little more nuanced, especially with funding from the Department of Justice and the stopping of, and I know we ended up getting a couple of them last year. And so I end up talking to police and planning today and trying to work through some on the administration part of how that gets, how that continues to move forward. So I don't have the details on how that's going to work, but I know there was still a commitment to be able to do that. It's just working through whether it is going to be there and whether they're going to claw something back. I think you're seeing in the news about a lot of those things, and so hopefully the commitment will still be there. Both the Kane Park Performer Space and the bathroom upgrades, bathroom upgrades are starting now. The Performer Space is midway through, went through a walkthrough and looking at completion in early May, hopefully before that, but they had said early May. And some, obviously, some more good news, the Dairy Building Demo was fully funded by the Department of Development. That's going to be moving forward. Don't have a timeline, but we did get funded for that demo on that side. Both Home Repair and Noble Road, Noble Road, they're working with Ubiz and should have an update on 317 and on the home repair, according to Director Zamp. And probably the last one, and the one that's going to probably cause the most consternation is potholes and street condition. Obviously, this has not been a great year for Northeast Ohio in the streets, and there's a significant amount that goes into that. One is the condition on how that works is freeze and thaw, freeze and thaw, moisture, moisture, moisture. And I've looked at personally probably a dozen different ways to do this, just on how do we fill better, not just in the city of Cleveland Heights, but there's really not a material that's better than cold patch, and cold patch is not good. But it's the only thing that they can fill, but usually, traffic will take it out and water will wash it out fairly quickly. That being said, crews are out all the time filling potholes. Obviously, there's a number of ways to get that information into the city, calling city council, mayor's action center, a lot of those different ways to be able to do it. It's just where we're at with the condition of the streets. And potholes aren't good, but they try to get out there as quickly as they can to get those filled, kind of go from there. That's about what I have.
Well, thank you. And I, you know, like you, I want to encourage everybody to use the mayor's action center. I know that, you know, I mean, we need people to report the potholes.
Yeah.
Because they're widespread and if nobody says anything, you know, you can't really expect...
Thank you. Or is that it?
Pardon me?
That's it?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to move on now to departmental reports. I don't think there are any, so then we'll go to public comment.
Mr. President?
Signed up.
Did you need us to read the notice? Did you want me to read that?
Oh, thank you, councilman. Yeah, actually, I'll have our clerk of council read this, but thank you. Skipped right over the clerk of council report.
This is to notify council that an application has been received from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for the transfer of a D1/D2/D3 permit from Boiling Seafood LLC located at 2201 Lee Road to Lee's Seafood Boil Lee Road LLC at the same address.
All right, now it's official. Thank you. And we're going to move on to public comment. How many do we have?
About five.
Okay, so first legislative agenda items?
Melody Joy Hart.
Hello, I'm Melody Joy Hart, and I want to talk about the budget. I'm a CPA, I'm also certified in financial planning and analysis, which means budgeting. I have watched the budget discussion unfold over the course of several months. Some of the comments have been harmful, that I've heard, and that they've caused some residents to assume the city is not financially stable, which is a false assumption. In Sunday's Plain Dealer Forum section, one individual writing in regarding Horseshoe Lake described Cleveland Heights as cash-strapped. This is absolutely not true. In fact, we've been running a large unencumbered balance for many years. The documents posted on the website show their uncovered general fund balance was $21 million at the beginning of 2024, and we ended the year with $27 million, are projected to end 2025 with $28 million. Remember that to maintain our credit rating, we must maintain $12 million of unencumbered general fund balance, so we have a very, very healthy reserve. Another point is that, like any company or any other city, each year there are retirements or people leaving to go to another job closer to home or with better upward mobility or more money, and labor markets are quite tight, it takes them all to fill positions. So although the budget reflects all the positions, there will undoubtedly be some vacancies at some point throughout the year. Therefore, it is not unusual to come in under budget. In fact, we usually do. For those reasons, as our largest cost is salaries. In fact, before the city published the fund balance, last December, I could have told you, we would come in probably north of $21 million, because throughout the year, we were under budget, which means that, of course, we wouldn't end up with more money. So that's an important thing, we have money, we're well off. Passing a full year budget on interim basis before January this year would have been preferable as contracts would not have been held up with a three-month budget. But, you know, as is, they are working toward a budget. Council hired an accountant to help them understand the budget, and the accountant has so far pretty much agreed with what the administration has presented. I am glad that this was helpful to council. I commend council for holding the meetings that they need to hold to ensure they have an understanding prior to voting. However, before another budget year, council should consider using funds of training dollars for classes. You have a lot of new council members, too. Classes at Ohio Municipal League or Cleveland State Urban Institute on municipal finance and budgeting, so that next year, there'll be a better understanding of budgeting, and it will go smoother. And that will be cheaper than an accountant. Additionally, the mayor has offered to meet with several of the council members to work on processes for next year. I encourage council to take him up on that as a first step of collaborating on a budget for 2026, being able to talk through the processes. In the meantime, the clock is ticking, and the state deadline for a past budget is looming, so please, quickly pass this budget. Thank you.
Drew Herzig, Bradford Road, Cleveland Heights. Counselors, Mr. Mayor, I was going to urge you to pass the budget tonight, but just based on the tenor of the conversation that I heard, I realize that some of you are determined to drive the bus right over the budget cliff. You remind me of some of the House Republicans in Washington who just want to play this brinksmanship for some sort of political agenda, which I don't understand. It does you no good, it does the city no good to be held hostage in this way. So I hope at your next meeting, you finally get real and say, we have to pass this budget. And whatever speeches you need to make about how much you object to all this sort of thing, make the speeches, get it out of your system, and pass the budget, please. In the meantime, I want to thank Counselor Larson for moving this through the Financial Committee, taking the time to make sure that everything is teed up and prepared. A lot of work has gone into that, you've done it with patience and poise, and the meetings where you've treated city employees with respect and courtesy, that makes a huge amount of difference, being the intermediary in a sense, a bridge between these two parties. Really appreciate all the effort that has gone into this. And I also want to thank the city employees who have turned themselves inside out, week after week, month out of month, trying to answer your questions, no matter how ridiculous they may think the questions or how ill-informed they behave professionally, they have put their feelings to one side, because these are their lives you are playing with, their lives and their livelihoods are waiting for you to get your act together and pass this budget, but they have not put that out there, they have been professional, they have answered your questions time after time after time, and we owe them an immense debt of gratitude. And I hope that the next year's council will never put the city employees through this sort of torture again. It's been really unconscionable to treat your employees this way, kind of thing. So next time around, pass the budget, say what you need to say, but just pass the budget and stop holding the city hostage. Thank you. Thank you.
Drew? You want to, we, that's the last of the legislative comments, and Drew has one for the public, general. So I'm calling you up again.
Yes, indeed. Drew Herzig, Bradford Road, Cleveland Heights. Mr. Mayor and counselors. March 31st is the Transgender Day of Visibility, and I would like to ask City Hall to fly the transgender flag on that day since Cleveland Heights has declared itself a safe haven for gender-affirming care. It's really important that our allies step up for us. Right now, because our trans community is so much under attack, we need our allies to push our visibility out there. So flying the transgender flag at City Hall on March 31st would make a big difference. Earlier, we talked about how some people are passionate about keeping children safe. That includes keeping trans children safe. And one of the best ways of doing that is letting them see trans adults so that they realize there is a life out there that they can lead. So visibility is crucial, as we know, any minority, you know, that there is no, you can't be what you can't see. So visibility is important. Trans kids need to see trans adults. And I'd really appreciate it if the city council and the mayor would make sure that our Trans Day of Visibility is celebrated here at City Hall by flying the trans flag. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name's John Gahl. Little nervous here. I'm the guy on Fairmount Boulevard with all the signs in his yard where South Taylor dead ends. And I'm here because this is an ongoing issue that frankly has been ignored for 20 years. In 1996, I bought a home in, that I could afford in a neighborhood that I liked. And it happened to have a guardrail all the way across the tree lawn in front of the house. And for years, nothing happened and everything was great. And then, I don't know, 2005, I believe it was, there was a major road project where Fairmount Boulevard was totally dug up and everything was in chaos all summer. And at the end of the project, when it was all put back together, I no longer had a guardrail. The crosswalk, which had once gone to the apron of my driveway, was now angled out into the intersection and went to the tree lawn where the guardrail had once been, but had been removed in order to accommodate this crosswalk. My question is, who removes a guardrail? Have you ever driven down the road, seen a guardrail, and thought, why is that there? What purpose does it serve? I don't think so. And I think it's pretty obvious why a guardrail was on the tree lawn in front of my property. Someone obviously thought there was a need for it and put it there. It was on city property. So obviously, the city had put it there because you wouldn't allow a private citizen to do that. At least, I doubt you would. So anyway, after the guardrail was removed, not once, not twice, three times, cars fleeing the police at high rates of speed have impacted my house, my car, my garage, destroyed things. And what have you done? The first time it happened in 2012, when the car went directly over the end of the crosswalk, which is now angled into the intersection, right in the target zone. That's where the car went before going up, hitting my, my car parked in my driveway in the dead of night, smashing it through my garage door, destroying all kinds of stuff inside before bouncing off to the side, mashing the fence into my neighbor's garden, and then the kids inside disappeared because of a police chase. All the cops know that they rode dead ends there, but they were going 85 miles an hour because they were hot on the trail. So that was the first one. At the time, the city said, oh, my gosh, we can't have that happen again. We're going to look into this. They put up a sign on the tree lawn, yellow, like that. Didn't say anything. That was soon run over. I know the name of the guy for the city that replaces signs. Why do I know his name? I shouldn't know the name of the guy that replaces signs. But he's been to my house numerous times over the year because those two signs, oh, after the first one was run over, they put up a sackett, as if that would protect me. And they were run over numerous times, and I kept complaining, hey, where's my guardrail? Where's my guardrail? Well, I was told numerous times, suck it up, get used to it. That's the way it is now. Too bad. Or, this was my personal favorite, oh, we can't put a guardrail there because that wouldn't be aesthetically pleasing.
Mr. Gahl?
What?
I'm so sorry, but you're out of time.
All right, fine. I've been hit three times. I'm out. Thousands and thousands of dollars.
I understand.
You, everything that you've suggested is supposed to be on my side of the sidewalk? No, the guardrail was on city property.
Mr. Gahl, unfortunate.
It's a liability issue. I can get sued. I'm in physical peril. I'm in financial peril, all because of what the city has done. Bill Hannah came to my house last year.
I know, but we're out of.
That was my attorney. Said he'd have a proposal for me in a couple of weeks. I'm still waiting, Bill!
All right, thank you, Mr. Gahl. All right, thank you.
This is unconscionable. I hold you accountable. You kept saying that ODOT wouldn't allow you.
Mr. Gahl?
Mr. President?
Yeah.
I might, just my way of response. There is a, a study underway that the city has contracted with the engineering firm GPD to do a comprehensive safety and traffic analysis of the intersection. That contract was let at the end of 2024. It is underway. It's anticipated to be done within the next 30 days. The next step in that, um, process, excuse me, is for GPD to meet in City Hall with, hopefully, Mr. Gahl and some of the neighbors, anybody who may be able to shed some perspective on what they think is happening in the intersection because there is an issue there with traffic. You know, there's, there's no doubt about that. It's not true that the city hasn't done anything within the last year because when I met with Mr. Gahl, it was on the day of the eclipse. And I did talk with his lawyer, and I've talked with his lawyer approximately 173 times since then. The, uh, the city has erected two signs facing northbound for southbound traffic either side of Taylor Road that are illuminated with flashing LEDs to make it clear that this is a T-intersection that does not continue through. City has erected a double-sided arrow on the south side of the intersection, directly in front of the house in the tree lawn, also illuminated with flashing LED signs, lights, rather, very visible, highly visible. And the city is continuing to explore steps that it can take to solve the problem rather than just doing something that looks like it's helpful. There's also a speed hump, speed table, that's been installed in the southbound lane of Taylor Road to get the attention of people who are headed toward the intersection, let them know that they need to slow down, that, you know, and hopefully then they notice the signs and so forth. And anything that comes out of this study that is along those lines of increasing safety, it may be lighting, it may be reengineering. It could be a, a more dramatic reengineering of the road. It's not clear at this point what the answer is going to be. But the city's been working at this diligently. On behalf of the city, I've been communicating regularly with Marlon Primes, Mr. Gahl's attorney. And I certainly understand his concerns about his safety, about the track record of vehicles making their way onto his property. It would be upsetting to anybody. We are doing everything that we can.
Well, thank you. And I take it you communicate this information to Mr. Gahl?
I communicate through his legal counsel.
Okay, very good.
And again, this, this meeting should take place within the next two weeks so that, uh, GPD will have the benefit of hearing directly from Mr. Gahl, who owns the house right in front of the end of the intersection, but also other people in that area. Because even when I was out there, folks mentioned things that they had noticed in terms of traffic coming westbound on the, in the northern lanes of Fairmount. There are concerns with traffic safety generally. The CSAP study, which is on your agenda tonight, is another step the city is taking to look at safety in a, in a very comprehensive way. And that's the mayor's commitment, that's the city's commitment to try to solve this issue.
All right, Councilman Cobb?
Is it, is it true that ODOT regulations prevent the, the reinstall of a guardrail?
Yes. ODOT regulations and traffic engineers say that it's not an appropriate location for a guardrail primarily because of the width of the lot. But, but like many things in law, there's always an asterisk. And so the city engaged this study in part to fully understand what the possibilities might be to make that situation safer.
Do we have anything official from ODOT specific to his property where we've asked them for an opinion or to weigh in on it?
Uh, we've talked principally with our engineers, GPD. So I'm not aware that we have a, a pronouncement from ODOT.
I think he mentioned that he may have contacted ODOT. I may have misheard that. But have it, have we reached out to ODOT or our engineer specifically about his house?
I'm going to suggest, Councilman, that because he's represented by legal counsel, he's threatening legal action against the city, we have an ongoing study to examine the site through the professional engineering services of GPD that we continue down that road and, and not litigate that here and now.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to move on.
We have one more, one more.
One more.
James Williams.
Yeah, please, I'm so sorry. Let's not forget about you.
Hello, hello. Good evening. Good evening, uh, counselors. James Williams, 25, Severn Circle. I love the story that the gentleman just told about the, um, what happened with the school bus and how he saved and went into action because, uh, many times, we don't look like what we've gone through. And I just, I appreciate that because, um, it is, is motivating to do the right thing and to help people out. And with that, I just bear with me. My, 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 my. On a hill far away, lived an old rugged cross, an emblem of suffering and shame. And how I love that old cross where the dearest and best for a world of lost sinners was slain. So I'll cherish the old rugged cross till my trophies at last I lay down. I will cling to the old rugged cross and exchange them someday for a crown. And exchange them someday for a crown. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Ready?
Does that conclude our, uh?
Yes, it concludes.
So now we're going to go to first readings for consideration of adoption. Madam Clerk?
Resolution number 33-2025. First reading, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Coventry Village Special Improvement District, Inc., in parentheses, Coventry Village CID, for advancement of funds in anticipation of assessment and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. Introduced by Mayor Sarin.
I'm sorry. So moved. Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, through no fault of their own. They did not get their assessment to be part of the property tax assessment that people receive. So they did not get, they will not get this money. And to advance them that money so they can continue the business of the city is really important. So this is something that I would like to see pass.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Director Hannah, I'm going to abstain on this because I'm on the board. Is that proper?
You have a rule on this, Mr. President, which is in Chapter 111. You're indicating that there's a conflict, and so it's a, it's a recusal situation.
And also to add to that, when there is a position on which you.
Recusal, that's what I meant.
When there's a position that you hold as a result of an ex officio designation, that conflict does not exist under Ohio law.
Okay, but I actually am on the board now, so I will recuse myself. But thank you for that. Anyway, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I'm recusing myself. That motion passes.
Resolution number 34-2025. First reading, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Security Automation Systems, Inc. for repairs to the security control and intercom systems of the Cleveland Heights City Jail, waiving competitive bidding and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. Introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Really glad this is happening. All in favor?
President Kuta?
Oh, yes.
I just want to say that Chief Britton did his due diligence on this. And the company that's going to, that has been selected, SAS, uses universal detention standard components, each of which can be readily ordered and replaced independent of the vendor. So it seems like the maintenance issues that we have right now, where it's not work, this is not working, would be far better off so we're in compliance with what the state requires. So I support this legislation.
Very good. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Resolution number 35-2025. Resolution declaring the fire-damaged property at 359, 3690 Grosvenor Road in Cleveland Heights, Ohio, to be a nuisance, authorizing abatement of the nuisance and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Yes, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I, I'd like to thank the city for finally taking action on this nuisance property. These residents and neighbors had contacted me last summer, and I brought this to the attention of Alan Butler and the Mayor's Action Center. And it's taken a while, but I know that these people will be very glad. This property is absolutely disgusting and deplorable. This is the kind of action that I would like to see the city taking more often on our nuisance properties that we have.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now, first readings only. I'm going to refer Resolution 362025 to, well, you can go ahead and read it. And I'll refer it, I guess.
Be happy to. Resolution number 36-2025. First reading, resolution adopting the city of Cleveland Heights Comprehensive and Equitable Safety Action Plan, also known as CSAP. Introduced by Mayor Sarin.
All right, and I'm going to refer that to the Safety Committee.
Resolution number 37-2025. First reading, resolution authorizing Cleveland Heights City Council to establish a high school internship program. Introduced by President Kuta.
All right, do I have a motion?
Don't need a motion.
Oh, right, I'm sorry, first reading, so. Second readings, go ahead.
Ordinance number 27-2025. Second reading, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with and requesting the cooperation of the County of Cuyahoga, Count, Cuyahoga, Ohio County in the matter of the resurfacing of Euclid Heights Boulevard in the city of Cleveland Heights municipality and declaring the necessity that this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. Introduced by Mayor Sarin.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Ordinance number 245-2024. Second reading, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Cleveland Heights to rezone the Park Synagogue property located at 3300 Mayfield Road to S2 Mixed Use District and transmitting the same to the Planning Commission. Introduced by Mayor Sarin.
All right, we're going to put this on for third reading on March 17th. Third readings?
Ordinance number 11-2025. Third reading as amended, February 18th, 2025. and ordinance making appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the state of Cleveland Heights, Ohio for the period of January 1, 2025 through December 31, 2025, repealing and replacing ordinance number 265-2024 and declaring the necessity this legislation become immediately effective as an emergency measure. Introduced by Mayor Sarin.
Okay, we're not going to be voting on this tonight, so that ends the legislation portion, committee reports. The committee reports, upcoming meetings. Go ahead, Vice President.
Thank you, President Kuta. Yes, I just want the residents to know that the Plane Development Committee had a meeting on February 26 at 10:30 a.m. I encourage everyone to watch it. I received a lot of good feedback from that meeting. So please keep your eyes and ears open as we continue to go through zoning with developers. Second meeting will be March 18th at 10:30 a.m. This will be the second meeting with the Noble Merchants to discuss either having a CID or an association, Merchants Association. And that's it. I think the other one is council comments. Thank you.
Very good. Councilwoman Larson?
The Finance Committee, we met on February 25th, at which time Director Hairston handed counsel the financial statements for year-end 2024. Over the weekend, the mayor informed me that the year-end transfer entries that I've been requesting for many weeks was complete. The mayor advised me that he would be posting revised year-end 2024 financials when those, when the financials are satisfactory to the mayor and Director Hairston. I'd like to also say that we were handed this evening at the Finance Committee meeting, the year-end fund balances that are, we understand the actuals. So council has that as a homework assignment. To make sure you look over that report. We should be getting it digitally from Director Hairston as well. We're still awaiting information. The state auditors have received all the unaudited financial statements from 2023 that the state auditors have requested. We did not vote tonight on the 2025 budget. I get it, we are running out of time. The next Finance Committee meeting is March 11 at 6 p.m. At that meeting, we will need to pass Ordinance 11-2025 Audit Committee for council's vote at the March 17, 2025 meeting. Municipal Services and Environmental Sustainability Committee will meet on March 18 at 5:00 p.m. That is all that I have right now.
All right, very good. Any other committee reports? Okay, we'll move on to old business. Yes, please, Vice President Russell?
Yes, I have old business. I am still waiting on my public records requests, all of them. And I just wanted to make it noted, I did put in one for October 1st to October 31st for all consulting and contract agreements as well as the email lists. And I'm still waiting on that. And this is going to be my last request.
All right, any other old business? Councilman Maddox?
I'm just still waiting on council to put in processes in place or discuss how we're going to move forward in terms of transparency with our public meetings, any adjustments, any trainings. We continue to discuss this, but nothing has been scheduled, no process have been created, no legislation, no directives at all. And so I'm really, really concerned that we've had a number of months now, and we've talked about this, but nothing has been put in place. Again, we've stated this is a training issue. If it's a training issue, it has not been corrected yet and we're not going into March of 2025. So at this point, I'm going to have to really ask for us, when are we scheduling this meeting? When are we having these conversations about processes and improving this? Because for me and where I'm sitting, nothing has changed in terms of what could or could not be happening around me or in meetings with any of my fellow colleagues in committees that I'm with. So again, if this is a training issue, why have we not discussed this? How we're going to move forward, make any corrections? I was advised a couple of months ago that we were, I was waiting on a process. I was waiting on some information to come in. At this point, we have to hold ourselves accountable. If this is a training issue, we have not made any adjustments, which means we're still at risk. And there hasn't been nothing this council has done in terms of mitigating that risk at all. So my question to my council colleagues again is, what processes, improvements, or discussions are we going to put in place around transparency and open meetings laws to make sure whatever happened or did not happen does not continue to happen? Again, several of my colleagues have stated this is a training issue. We have not discussed it. We haven't dealt with it. We haven't made any corrections. We haven't built processes or anything around this. We've only just left it there on a shelf. So at some point, we're going to have to deal with this. And so my question is, how are we going to get a solid date or processes? Who's going to put their hands on this? But we need to move forward. We're now going into the second quarter of the year with nothing in place that's going to stop any type of risk of being mitigated with this council.
All right, thank you, Councilman. I, I'm glad to put that item on the, on the list of items that we're going to discuss. And again, I don't know what you want to call it, Councilman Posh. The expectations meeting.
It's the expectations meeting that I think Addie is now thinking she can only fit it in on her schedule until sometime in April.
Yeah, and I think we should do that. But let's, let's put it on the agenda for March 17th as to scheduling this, this meeting. I think we do need to have that discussion. Any other, where are we, old business, old business? Okay, new business? Yes.
Under new business. I received a text message of a survey that Cleveland Heights is giving. And I would like to know who's giving the survey and is it a prank or is it an actual survey or what? I'd like to know if anybody knows.
I'm sorry, a survey for what?
It says that the phone came up saying that Cleveland Heights is giving a survey for, I should have, I'll have it ready for you next time. But there's a survey going on that I was texted to fill out information regarding a survey for Cleveland Heights. I want to know if that's an actual survey that Cleveland Heights is actually giving or is it a prank or scam or something that I'm, that people are texting me on my phone?
Just make sure you give them your social security number and bank account information. You'll be fine.
Well, I don't think that's funny, but I'm thinking actually, it's actually a, are you aware of a survey, Mayor? That's being sent out through, for residents to fill out?
I would love for you to forward whatever information you have to me.
Was through a text message?
You can maybe take a screen. You know my number. You can, you can send it over.
I mean, but are you aware of anything? I just want to make sure that I'm not, are you aware of any surveys? Is anyone aware of a survey that Cleveland Heights is offering for residents?
Are you guys doing a survey? Are you guys doing a survey?
No, we're not doing a survey.
I think we actually talked about a resident satisfaction survey. And I think the mayor was pretty clear that he was not interested in doing one this year. And I think now that you bring this up, it is something that we briefly talked about in our Safety Committee. And I do have some information on that, but I'm going to discuss it with the committee, the Safety Committee first. But this is sort of outside of what-
Well, you know, when, when you're getting something saying it's coming from Cleveland Heights, I just wanted to make sure it's legitimate or it's not legitimate.
Let's make sure that, let's-
And I will, I will copy and paste it and forward it.
And forward it to the-
Law Director?
No, yeah, Law Director and, and the IT Department.
Director Hannah, are you, are you aware of any surveys being done by the city here?
No, the Law Department's not involved in any surveys being conducted.
Okay.
Right.
I would say additionally, this is definitely something that we could address either just via email or even in one of our weekly meetings if somebody wanted to bring up something like this. But I hear your concern and I wouldn't want any residents who might be receiving what could be a scam text message to fall victim to any scammers out there. If you feel like you might be targeted for a scam, I would like to point you in the direction, and anybody in, in all of our residents, in the direction of the scam squad at the county. Fun story, I'm actually one of the reasons why we've got a Consumer Affairs Department down at the county. And one of the things that they do is protect people from scams, mainly through information sharing. But this is the sort of thing that you might want to reach out to them and get an understanding about what's coming to your phone.
No, I'm very much aware. I just, before I do that, I needed to make sure that it was not coming from the-
Just have at it. That should be your first stop all times.
Well, if it says coming from Cleveland Heights, Cleveland Heights, I thought my first stop was to make sure it wasn't coming from this branch of government. And then I will go and make sure and take care of it with the-
I can tell you, I know that, that heads ups aren't always plentiful. Sometimes, but certainly I would, I would inform the council members if the administration was going to be doing a resident survey, especially since I made it very, very clear that in municipal election year, I thought that it would be wholly inappropriate for any of us to pursue some sort of satisfaction survey that really could and might reasonably be assumed to have political implications. I want to avoid that as much as possible. So I did make it very clear, as Councilman Posh mentioned, that we are not pursuing this year a resident satisfaction survey. So I don't, I don't know what text you got, but I would encourage you to both listen and to provide that to the scam squad.
Okay. Well, just, just so that you can see.
I don't think I need to read it, but it does look pretty darn official, like it's a city thing. So maybe we should also talk to our Communications Department.
NIT, yeah. See, just so they could block something like that.
I would assume that that was-
Yeah, 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 I see that. Yeah, I wouldn't hit that, I wouldn't hit that icon there. All right, any other new business? All right, we're going to move on to council member comments. Who would like to go first? Or, okay, Councilman Maddox?
Want to make sure I put myself on the clock. Only one thing, and that's just a shout out to the city, city staff, community center, DeJapo for an amazing Black history program. It was great from the vendors to the music performances, to the community coming together, the education, just the mood, the heritage, all of it. So just shout out to that. It's great to see the city really promoting and pushing that, especially in the times that we're living in now. So I'm looking forward to next year's already. I'm actually looking forward to Juneteenth as well. But it's great to have a city that celebrates all and truly believes that all are welcome. And so I just want to shout out the entire staff for that and for a great, great event. I'm still hearing great things about it. And it looks like it's going to bubble up a couple of smaller events all across the community now to keep things going, keep that momentum going. So great job, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman. Any other council member comments?
Yes, thank you, President Kuta. I just want to notify the residents back by popular demand, March 19th at 6:30 p.m. I will be hosting another estate planning workshop at Cleveland Heights High School at the Mini Auditorium. So we had about 100 people show up at the last one. They were requesting another one. So we are here to learn together. As most of you know, I have expressed that I'm dealing with elderly parents and I am learning how to navigate through their estates and making sure things are well before they expire. So I'm helping the community learn with me far as estate planning workshops. So please join me at Cleveland Heights High School, March 19th at 6:30 p.m. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other council member comments? All right, President's Report. I would just say, thank you, Vice President Russell, for getting Dorian Pace here and honoring him. I think he did a tremendous thing. He's a very modest guy and I'm sure he probably in some ways didn't want all this attention, but I'm glad we did honor him. He did an incredible thing. As far as the budget goes, I'm glad we're having the Finance Committee meeting on the 11th. It will probably be the last committee meeting we have before we vote on a budget. When I hear people coming up to the microphone talking about issues that are not council issues, like nobody on council ever said we didn't have a surplus. I've heard that zero times. I've heard zero times that anybody say that we don't have a healthy balance. I, I don't think it's political to ask for financial statements, account balances, an actual encumbered balance. I think these are, this is information that council, any council that has a budget authority would need. So I'm hoping when we do vote that people don't come up and bring up issues that are not before this council. There's a good reason why we're, where we're at today and we can talk about that in a couple of weeks. But I, I would like the conversation to stay within the realm of the actual issues that we did face as a council when we were presented a budget in November. And I think it's all well documented. And with that, I will adjourn this meeting at 8:45.